All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's Thursday, October 20th, 2022, and this is the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. And here tonight, we have Larry Murphy, who's from the planning board, who's our liaison, Michelle Weaver, who is an associate member, and myself, Eric Son, the chair, Mario Cannavale, who is a member, Jack Kelly, who's an associate member, Martha Taylor, who's our town planner, and we have Chrissy Lopri, who is our excellent administrator. So with that, we'll open the meeting. Mario, do you?
Sure. So I think our first one tonight is going to be Kevin and Lisa Barlow, 1710th Street. The applicants are requesting a special permit slash finding for relief of section 97-4D 5C01 increase in footprint and 97-4D 5C02 upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow for the proposed use project. The applicants propose to raise the existing nonconforming two-family dwelling, nonconforming front yard setback and construct a new two-family dwelling with an increase in footprint, height on the lot, front yard setback to be increased, becoming less nonconforming located at 1710th Street Plum Island, Newbury, Mass., assessors map U02, Lot 244.
Yes, you say continued?
Yes, it's continued.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, we were in here last month, and the conditions for the meeting tonight would be to show you the plans that were adjusted by the architect. Specifically, you wanted to make sure it appeared as two separate units, so it was adding the door in the mudroom and removing the door in the den, which you should have those plans in the document.
Yes, we have.
So that is my understanding of what needed to be done at this point, sir?
And we have, we have a draft of a motion. There are some edits as the motion was being drafted that we have for discussion. Were there additional edits after the, sort of the first review of this?
Just the edits that Martha has provided, and I've provided you copies with her comments.
Okay. So do you have?
I don't have any other ones.
Okay. No? No? Okay. There is a question about the lot. Is it, is that the question of one lot or two lots? That, Martha?
Yeah, my understanding is it was advertised for 1710th Street, but the project and the proposal really is for 17 and 1910th Street.
Is that correct?
It's, it's two separate lots, but they're joint common ownership.
So do we have to just title it that way, or what is the, what is the understanding of the lots, or that they're built on it, same ownership?
Right, I mean, under zoning, they're a merge, because one of them is a vacant lot, they're treated under zoning as one lot, but they are two separate parcels on the assessors.
Do we just need to add that here for the record, or what?
So, and I think, you know, as Chrissy noted, the, the FAR is based on the lot coverage or the lot size for both lots, and so the FAR is based on the combined total, so it should be, you know, it seems like that information should be incorporated.
Okay, so if we edit the property description to be 17 and 1910th Street Plum Island, then is there, are there other references to the address in the motion that would then need to be edited in follow suit?
Yeah, there is one, I think Chrissy had added one farther down.
I changed D.
C and, yeah, C and D. One of them has changed, one does not. Right, the general facts?
Because the record only live at 1710th, I reflected that.
Okay.
And then on D, I added 17 through 1910th Street.
Okay. So then really, it's the property description up front. At the top, the date, the 2, the RE, the property?
Yes.
And then there's also a header on the pages?
Yes.
Have you received a draft copy of this?
I don't, I don't think I have.
I apologize.
Sorry.
I didn't mean to.
This week's email.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a moment to, to read it? The motion is in favor with the conditions, or maybe it's, we just reconfirm the decision?
I don't have any issues with this draft.
And, Eric, I hope we remember the last one.
Eric, under four decision, excuse me, sorry, under four decision on page 5 or 6, number five, I remember you mentioning something in the meeting last month about that, so I just added that sentence, and I forgot to tell you. I don't know if it needs to stay.
Just talking about the landscaping? It's probably going to get destroyed anyway.
Yes, and we will.
Okay. Do you have any landscaping that you love?
Uh, no.
Well, it's anything over the property line, was there, was there, I think it was just the technicality of a fence that was kind of straddling the property line and just making sure that anything that was, you know, nonconforming in terms of was removed, you were doing a whole new total landscape, and that was just, that's the condition.
Okay.
And certainly that can be pulled through by the building inspector and building partner.
Sure.
All right, Mario, do you have any?
No, I don't.
Jack? Good. Good. All right, so is there a motion to accept the decision?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the decision and to grant the edits as described.
Okay. And the edits are the property address, address, which is?
17 and 1910th Street, versus 17.
There's a thing?
Seven.
All right, all of them there?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you very much.
With passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like your, um, large plan back?
You can walk that big plan? You guys could wallpaper your house?
I got the one with my notes, so they got the words before it's done.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, Al Ward, Aiding Northern Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a special permit finding for relief from section 97- D 5C02 upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project. In order to renovate the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling on the lot with an increase in height on the property located at Aiding Northern Boulevard Plum Island, Newbury, Mass., six was mapped U03, Lot 1, 3, 0.
Okay, so as Elaine is not here, between Michelle and Jack, do you, either do you have a preference who sits on this one? Is this the first one that's been heard? Yes. Mike? Okay. All right, so Jack will be the voting, Jack Kelly will be the voting, third overall member.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Douglas Duchesne representing the wards, Alfred, Alan, and Jane. I apologize, my clients are not here. They were in Maine today attending a funeral service for one of their relatives, and I know they're trying to get back here, so they may show up in time, but I do apologize for their absence. In fact, if I could, we're going to try the new, new presentation method. Can you go to the one before that, the introductory thing? So again, Douglas Duchesne.
Does the camera cover the screen at all?
Yes, it does. Sure.
Do you want to put in presentation mode and make it bigger on the bottom right next to the minus and plus? There's that screen yet? Oh, keep going, keep going. No, no, to the left, that screen, right there. That should make it bigger. There you go. And move it over.
All right.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you. That's great. As I, as I said, Douglas Duchesne from Penner and Biggleson, attorney Colleen Hayes is with me as well, helping me with the technology. And again, Al and Jane Ward are the owners, and Daniel Lamb was the architect on the project. And in fact, if I could, I'd just like to give you a copy of a revised plan and a, and a letter of support that we received from one of our directive letters. The wards contacted my office fairly recently. They had actually filed this application on their own and had set this meeting out, but as a result of some interaction with neighbors and questions, they've asked that we present for them this evening so as to be able to answer any leading questions the board might have. But one of the things I did notice in reviewing the application was that the wards had failed to provide you a plan that showed the existing height and the proposed height based on the mean average height, which I know is what the board uses. The wards had actually filled everything out and provided plans that showed the peak roof height. So I just wanted to make sure that for tonight's discussion, you had a revised elevation set which addressed the height of the mean height of the roof rather than the peak height, although as you'll see in a minute, in either event, we're still quite low relatively speaking. A quick project summary, the wards are seeking a special permit to redesign the interior layout of their pre-existing nonconforming home, which includes removing an existing bedroom on the first floor, adding a staircase in its place, and building a second floor addition in which they will relocate that bedroom and put a dedicated bathroom. They will not be creating any new nonconformities, nor will they be exasperating any of the existing nonconformities. As we know, or as I know, the wards could do what they're doing as a matter of right because they're not creating new nonconformities or any exasperating any existing nonconformities, but because we are located in the P I O D, any increase or upward extension of the building requires a special permit. So it is because we're adding up that we're here. With respect to the existing conditions, the lot is pre-existing nonconforming, it has an area of 17,592 square feet where we know 40,000 square feet is required. It has 100 feet of frontage where 125 feet are required, however, no proposed changes to the lot size or the frontage is proposed. The structure is pre-existing nonconforming in two respects. First of all, the front setback is at 16.6 when in fact 20 feet is required, and our left side corner actually is 1.4 feet, or 1, 1.4 feet over the line where 10 feet is required, but again, we are not proposing to change or exasperate that existing nonconformance. The proposed structure, as I said, is to-
Excuse me, Counselor, can I go back? In other words, the other side, the sideline is over on the next door guy's property?
It is, it's actually, it is.
Foot and a half or whatever.
Yes, 1.4 feet, correct. And that actually, the next door neighbor, so to speak, is the emergency accessway from northern to the beach. And the accessway, I mean, well, I'll get to that, actually. I'll give you the more details of how that came to be.
Yeah, and on the application, it has 8.4 as the front setback versus you have up here 16.6.
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I misread. I apologize, we're, maybe I measured from the garage, but you are correct, sir. The plan, the certified plan from Mr. Dixon shows 8.4. However, we are not proposing to in any way modify that nonconforming. I apologize for that. Okay. We're proposing to redesign the existing single-family home on the lot. The hand structure will meet your lot coverage requirements, we're not changing lot coverage, so it is currently conforming. In fact, if I could, I'm just going to grab my chart, so I have it. The enhanced lot will meet coverage requirements, and it will meet FAR requirements. In fact, this is a relatively minor change, it's only adding 550 square feet to the entire structure, so our FAR will, resulting FAR will only be 18% with the addition, even though 25% is allowed, so well below the FAR. And we are meeting height requirements, just to give you a quick, on that, quick one on that, the, as we know, the 35 feet is the maximum height, however, as the new plan shows, we are, we're starting out with a mean height of 13 feet and only going up to 19, or 21. I'm sorry, I can't, it's kind of a chart, I apologize, but-
Mean is 24, 21.4.
But in any event, 21.4, and in fact, the peak height post addition will only be 24 feet, so we're well, well below the 35-foot requirement. Essentially, I'm redesigning the interior of the house, as I said, there'll be no change at all to the footprint, and therefore, no change to the lot coverage, which is currently In redesigning this existing dwelling, it's certainly not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or to the P I O D. The structure is in need of updating, and, you know, some interior renovation and some improvements in functionality, so it's, it's certainly beneficial in that it's going to result in, you know, a better structure with more sustainability. It will certainly improve the aesthetics of the property by the time they get done finishing it, and that will increase the value of the property and will bode well for the values of the surrounding neighborhood. That certainly results in an increased tax revenue for the town. As I'll discuss it a little more detail in a minute, or maybe I'll address it now, the proposed structure will not impact, significantly impact views or cause shadowing to adjacent property. I know some of the neighbors sent a letter of opposition, which we drafted responses to and submitted to the neighborhood, to the board, but one of the claims was that this was going to result in a dramatic impact on people's views of the water and will block the view. Not that I understand that to be a measure of detrimental impact on the neighborhood, but it is claimed to be so. So I took, I went out and we took some pictures of the property. Here it is here. I think Mr. Ward actually got a drone photo for this, but here is the property. Here is the garage where we're proposing the, the height increase, and here's another view of the garage where the height increase is proposed. While I'm at this picture, this is the emergency access to the beach. This corner is 1.4 feet into that. At the same time, the actual emergency access then deviates onto the wards' property, so the access goes across their property in any event. As I understand it, as far back as the 70s, when this was potentially built, I think that the owners at the time in the town just said, well, you're not impacting our right of way, and we apologize that the right of way cuts through your property, but, you know, we're going to leave it there, and there's never been any incidences where access, emergency access to the beach was inhibited in any way by that encroachment, and certainly the wards and their ownership have done nothing to prevent use of that walkway or that accessway over their property. It's just been a mutual satisfactory arrangement. I did discuss this issue directly with Mr. Burnett to make sure that, you know, adding on to this building that has that encroachment, whether that would be considered a new nonconformity or exasperation of the existing nonconformity, and he, his answer was that he does not consider an upward extension of the, this barn to be an, excuse me, garage, to be an exasperation of the existing nonconformance. So like in other cases where, you know, and like, for instance, the front setback, we are not in any way increasing that or exasperating it. But getting back to the view question, these are photos, this is a photo from the back of the property, and because of these windows here, you can see the property that is directly across the street, and the height of that building is slightly higher than our existing structure. But recall, we're putting our addition over here. There will be no change at all to this roof line across. Therefore, that neighbor's view over or through or above the ward's property will be untouched from what it is today. Now, if they're looking out over the ocean and they kind of turn a little and look over the garage, sure, we're going to have a little, we're going to have a six foot, six feet higher, but again, their home is higher than this, so I don't consider that in any way a, you know, deterioration to their ocean views. They might just have one little angle that'll be a little more impacted, but again, that's not a detrimental impact to the neighborhood, but rather a, you know, a subjective determination by the neighbor across the street, directly across the street. Now, with respect to houses on either side of us, here we are, so I took a picture of this way showing the neighbor across the street to that side. As you can see, we're not going to have any impact on this neighbor's view whatsoever. Our addition is actually on the far other end of the house. On the end of the house where the addition is, which is here, the garage, here's our neighbor across the street. Again, you know, our roof over here is going to have little impact to their view at all, they'll still have this open view shed, I don't know if they can see over that house in any event, but I guess maybe if they look to hard right, this might have a minor impact. But to say that we're having a, you know, decimating impact on views and thus a significantly detrimental impact to the, to the neighborhood is, is not justified here at all. As you can see, and I think this picture says it all, you know, we're, we're far enough away from everybody that a, a small increase in this roof and no changes at all here is not really going to wreck the view from, from this direction. And so I just wanted to address the view thing, although again, I don't know if that's necessarily a, a factor in determining detrimental impact to the, to the neighborhood. So again, we're not exasperating our formies, we're not changing the footprint, we're not going to shed light, shadowing, or significantly impact anyone's view of the water. And the, quite frankly, the proposed alteration in the increase in the height is consistent with the neighborhood and the P I O D in general. We're all very aware of the fact that people are raising their roofs and raising their homes as much as they can, and, you know, to the extent most people push the 35 feet, we're talking about a resulting height here after the, average height after the addition of just over 21 feet, so well below the 35 feet without question. My clients have met with their neighbors, they've discussed the project with your butters. I did just provide you a letter from our direct butter here. They are supportive of the, the project, and I know my clients have spoken with all of the neighbors, but as you know from their submitted, some of the neighbors have chosen to oppose this, and so I don't have letters of support from them, but we do have the one from the direct neighbor to the right. If I could just jump quickly through the plans and, excuse me, calling, so here is our existing structure. I do apologize that 8.4 is clear there, I don't know why it's wrong on the chart, or it's, it's wrong on my presentation chart. Here's our little encroachment here, 1.4 feet, and again, although this is shown as the public, why, then here, this actually, you know, comes up here through the, through the ward's property, but again, there's no issue with that, with that. If we go to the next slide. So here are our existing elevations from the rear, here's that breezeway, and here is the existing garage, this is side elevation of that. If we go to the next one. And then here are our other two existing elevations, is the front elevation from the street and the other side elevation showing the garage, the side of the garage as it exists today. Here is our existing footprint, we've got a bedroom and a living room and a little kitchen net area, a porch, and a garage, and then of course, the rest of the house, which is not proposed to be touched. I will tell you that we had Mr. Burnett in, wards had Mr. Burnett in to inspect the house prior to their application and to get a determination letter from him, and he determined at that time, and I've subsequently verified that with him as early as Monday or Tuesday, that he did not believe or felt that the existing structure of this, or layout of this, in any way constituted a second or separate living unit, and that the minimal, I mean, I think they had a microwave and a fridge in here, or some kind of small little stove thing, that it didn't rise to the level of being a separate unit by any means, but rather was an integral part of the home, and he has concluded, as reflected in his determination letter, that we can move this bedroom, put the stairway in here, and put the bedroom and the new bathroom up above, and we still will not be in any way creating or developing a second unit here. If we go to the next. So here's the new proposed, we've removed the bedroom, and as you can see, there's a pretty substantial stairway that goes in here that gets us up to the second floor, no changes to the rest, and then here's the second floor, master bedroom, here are the stairs that come up, master bedroom- Master bedroom, 483 square feet and a new bathroom. We are currently designated and the assessors cards and as determined by Mr. Burnett as a four-bedroom home existing. We will still be a four-bedroom home when we're done, as it is their intention to eliminate that downstairs bedroom, as they're putting a substantial stairway in the middle of that room. So it was a four-bedroom home, will still be a four-bedroom home. We will however be adding a bathroom. If we go to the next one. Again, just some more pictures. Here's the existing structure. And I don't know, go ahead, you can just click through them kind of quick, just to give the board a feel. Again, here's the back view. Here's the view through the, through the breezeway with the neighbor across the street. And then these are our views of the neighbors to the side. Here's our other neighbor across the street. And I think, I think that's a pretty good pictorial representation of the, of the property. Are there more pictures? I'm not sure. I know we have a lot. Yeah, just to, I'll go back to that last one. Just to show you, I mentioned that even with our addition here, we're still gonna be the lowest house along the street. You can see the height of this. This is even higher. And as you go down here, you can see this home is much higher than us and will be, continue to be as well as the house. So if you look down either side, all of the houses along the water are, are gonna be higher than our house when we finish. So we're not out of character whatsoever. And while I believe this house and the house directly across are higher than us, I can't say that the third one down on this side of the street is higher because it appears to be a two-story, so. But again, we're, we're 20, 21 feet when we're done here. It's so far below your 35-foot requirement, I just, I think it's the lowest one I've proposed. So I don't think my clients are asking for anything significant in here. I think their proposed renovations and addition to the home are generally modest in terms of what we're seeing happening out on Plum Island. And therefore, it's certainly not inconsistent with Plum Island or the Plum Island Ovaly District or the neighborhood in general. And again, except for some of these questions being raised about views and to the extent the board wants to hear it, I can certainly address the questions that have been raised about prior owners renting of the property and my clients' rental of the property, but I don't know if that is necessarily germane to this board's consideration in any way because there's nothing that's been done by my clients that was illegal or are not allowed. I will tell you, my clients have rented the house in the past, as we know many people on Plum Island do, but they have only ever rented the house in its entirety. And that is all they would ever continue to do. They have no desire to start trying to get a second unit here or rent it separately. Now, I can't speak to what was done by the prior owners. I do understand at least from the neighbors, that the prior owner may have rented, you know, short-term rental, the, that bedroom in the, that little area behind the garage as it exists today. But my clients have never done so, don't intend to do so, but I will be honest with you, they do intend to rent the house as a whole, as has been done since the seventies, when they continue. I mean, let's face it, that's the way a lot of people are able to own and maintain and afford properties like this. So nothing illegal and not proposing to do anything different than what they've done in the past. And again, I don't know if that's germane to your consideration, but it was raised and I do want to address it. And if the board wants me to address any of the other questions that were raised or if the neighbors present them, I will respond accordingly. But, but with that, I view this as a relatively simple upward extension, the, with no new conformities, no exasperation of conformities and, and no detrimental effect to the neighborhood. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Jack, you read?
Um, I'm processing. Okay, come here if you, no, take your time. I'm sure.
Yeah, I just have a little confusion here. You had mentioned that it was, it is a single-family house.
Yes.
But it, it was advertised by Mr. Ward, I believe, that it's a cool breezeway connects a one-bedroom studio with a kitchenette. It's a five-bedroom house with a cool breezeway connecting a one-bedroom studio kitchenette. To me, that sounds like it's a separate studio apartment.
Well, but, but they, they weren't ad, they didn't advertise that studio for rent. They advertised the house as a whole for rent, explaining that it has a, you know, studio.
But who's to say, somebody come and say, "Oh, I'd like to, you know, we have something to rent that place too."
So I think what we're saying is it, from the documentation presented, presented from the assessors card that says one family.
Yeah.
And the incomplete drawings that are presented to us like a whole house, it looks like a single unit.
It is.
Right, so that would be a two-family.
No, no, no.
And you, you said this was, was, I didn't get your exact words, but it was connected. And if you look at the plans, the, the two sides of the house are not connected. Right, right here. Here, there's no way to get from this house to this house.
So they're connected by that right hand?
No, they're physically connected.
Yeah.
So you have to walk outside in the buff to get from one to the other?
No, no, there's a door.
Where's the door?
This.
Where's the door, right here? And in proceeding, this isn't going forward until the rest of the whole house is shown. So that shows all the bedrooms and it shows all the, and it shows all.
There is a door here.
It's, it's on, it's on the plan. So we're, we're coming at you from.
Okay.
A concern that this, right now, is a totally separate unit. And whether the building inspector said, and we're gonna have to ask him and maybe have to go out and look at it ourselves, but.
Sure.
If you have separate accommodations for, for a bedroom, for a bathroom and for a kitchen, then you have, you know, a definition of a dwelling. And if it's separate and it's, it's not totally joined and connected, you know, and it's kind of funny that someone would have a house with two kitchens in it.
Doesn't have two kitchens, has a little kitchenette.
It's a kitchen. It's a, if you read the definition and go to the definition of what it takes to be an accessory apartment or apartment. It has, and people have represented that to us, with a counter, a bedroom, you know, a sink, like a wet bar, and all you have to do is put a hot plate in it, has the ability to cook.
So that's my question, kind of follow-up on that. Do we, I guess that's for the board, do we have a specific difference in Newbury, in Newbury between a kitchen and a kitchenette? Are they separate legal things?
Well, you can look at the definition in the back of it.
I was just looking for.
Right, so no. So there is no distinction between something that sort of, and also.
It just sounds smaller.
The code and the bylaws are here to, for everybody's interest from now until eternity. So as much as we are all Newbury residents here and we entrust in everybody, having, just having something that is set up to be something different and then saying you won't do it isn't what the intent of the bylaws are for. So it either is a one-family and it, it has all the characteristics of a one-family or it's a two-family and you have, you have to prove the right of the two-family in order to have that condition.
But we're not asking for the right to have a two-family. Your building inspector has concluded that this is one house.
We're gonna challenge the building inspector on that.
Okay.
I'm gonna challenge the building inspector on that.
Okay. But we're, all we're asking to do is move an existing bedroom. So whatever that setup is today, and it's been like that since the wards purchased it and from what I understand.
When did the wards purchase it?
11?
2011.
And the garage in that, that, you know, the addition in the back was done in the seventies. So it's been there a long time. And I'm not saying that that justifies that it's now become a two-family, because we're not claiming that it's a two-family. And I don't see how the board can say, "Well, it kind of looks like one and even though your building inspector says it's not, and even though you're not doing anything with this change, that would make it any more of a..."
Can someone live there without going into the main house in that apartment?
Yeah, you could go out, you could go out through the garage.
There's another way.
And there's a.
There's two, there's two doors to the outside.
There's a door off, yeah.
There's two. So I don't have to go into the house at all to live in.
You have to find the house though, you'd have to go.
I don't have to go into the main house. It's a totally separate house.
Yeah, you could walk through the garage, yes, you could.
No, you don't have to walk through the garage. You can walk through the, in the breezeway, which is, there are just screens and there's a deadbolt on this door and there's another door on the ocean side. So there's two, two doors.
Yeah, but you would have to go through the breezeway, which is part of the house.
Yeah, but the house, it's just a screen, screened and porch, a covered porch.
But we, we discussed the last house that actually was documented, documented as a two-family that had the condition and having to have, in that case, if it really was a two-family, then they needed to separate the two units and not have it be contiguous. And this is, looks like it's the exact opposite of that, where it's, you're claiming it's one thing, but it, it is totally separate. And without the door on the plans, what are we, I mean, what are we supposed to think? It's a totally separate.
I, I do apologize. As I said, those plans were filed before my involvement and I will have to be more than happy to get the board a, you know, a, a complete floor plan of the existing main home. And it will show a door into that breezeway from the hall.
If I could just interject for one thing, just to address Mr. Conavalle's comment about having it advertising as a separate one-bedroom suite. The reason that they did that was if they had, you know, a second generation or older generation that kind of wanted to be separate from the family and have their own quiet space, that's why they delineated it as that sort of separate unit so they could get away from the, you know, however many kids and things were running around in the main house to give the older generation or, you know, another couple some quiet time on the other side.
I, I mean, it's not unreasonable that the, that our clients in trying to rent this wanted, as a whole home, you know, you rent a sub-section from a rental advertisement for the whole home where they both, you know, where they boasted that, "Oh, there's sort of this separate little, you know, suite area." And again, I think that was to attract families, larger families, it is a four-bedroom home, that, you know, if you had a, a small child or kids, they would have their own little area to take care of the kids. Or if just the opposite was true, you had senior parents that didn't want to necessarily be in the heart of the activities, they could go to it. But there's never been any action on my client's part that to rent that or to designate it as a separate apartment. They just haven't. And they are, again, I've, I've been honest with you that they do intend to rent this as a single-family home and they will probably advertise that they have this little, you know, separate area for privacy. But to say that my clients are somehow illegally operating or trying to create a separate apartment when the building inspector has already told us, you know, that that's not the case, I, I just don't know how that plays into your determination of whether this addition is more detrimental to the neighborhood or not.
Two separate units or then, you know, twice as many people or cars showing up, it is a separate distinction. We have, you know, on Plum Island, it's pretty specific about what you have the right to have and if, if, if you're changing the use, then it's a big deal.
Mr. Chairman, we're not proposing to change the use. And how, if we have four bedrooms to start and we have four bedrooms to finish, how is that allowing us to, you know, double the people that rent the house? I don't.
I think it's the bedrooms that are hanging you up. I think it's the kitchen slash kitchenettes. Isn't it a little unusual to have two kitchens in a home?
I, I did in my last home.
But Doug, as, as we know in Massachusetts, it doesn't matter how many kitchens you have in the property.
Right.
It does, having another kitchen doesn't designate it as a separate unit, as we saw from Ernie Box's house in Gloucester that has 10 kitchens.
Oh, was it?
He's not a 10.
Can't talk about.
He's not a 10-unit.
Yeah, he went to, that went to the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, the determination that the number of kitchens in your house does not.
And I don't think that's what's holding us up here. I, I think it's not the number of kitchens. I think that it is a separate unit. I mean, I, it's a separate unit. I could move in there tomorrow and never have to go into the main house.
Yeah, but isn't that the case?
It's two-family.
When people have a, a, you know, a bedroom and a master suite over a garage in any residential?
But they don't have a bathroom in there and a kitchen, that's the difference.
They're perfectly willing to take the kitchenette out if that's something that is concerned to you.
Okay, so in terms of moving forward, I think the first thing is we need a full set of plans that show a complete house.
Okay.
On a piece of property.
All right.
Right, I mean.
You want the footprint, I mean, excuse me, the floor plan of the entire home?
If it is an entire home.
Yes, sir.
And not just a half a home.
I get it.
We'd like the whole home.
Okay.
And it just proves the number of bedrooms and it shows everybody exactly what's going on.
All right.
And there's no confusion later on when somebody's looking at half a home and wondering where the other half is.
Okay.
If someone wanted to do more to this house in the future, and then there's confusion, so we've gotta have a whole plan. And if we're gonna do the areas and takeoffs and have a chance to look at it, we need the whole plan.
Okay.
To, if there's a door, please add the door, please add a photo so that we can.
Sure. I, I will also solicit an opinion from the building inspector.
Yeah, I, and as will I, will ask him for a letter to.
Oh, okay.
To state it.
All right.
And.
I won't bother him then.
Yeah.
Probably better coming from you anyway.
All right, so that, that's, that's where we are right now.
Okay.
So at the moment, we're gonna, we're gonna go to the public.
Okay.
Opinion and thanks for your presentation.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. So at this time, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the project in the audience? At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak against the project? He serves.
Forrest, thank you for letting me speak. So my name's Timothy Frost, I'm with my wife, Hannah.
Address, please.
76 Northern Boulevard. So I live directly to the right of Mr. Ward, right next door on the ocean side. So to start with, I would tell you that I, I did some work on my home not too long ago and what was, what the town required me to do and all the things is way beyond what they're even suggesting. But Mr. Ward has certainly a right to do anything he wants with his home and keep it and fix his home and raise his roof. The issue here is, and I think there's multiple neighbors here tonight, is what we believe, and I think that before we go any further, what, what we can decide tonight or we have to legally get this decision, is that whether Mr. Ward built it or not, this is a two-family house. There's no law that is continuous law that connects the two properties. They're two separate units. So in Massachusetts, you have, you could have an in-law apartment if it's in a condition single space. There is, no matter what anybody tries to paint here, this apartment that's back here is illegal. It wasn't on the original plans, it's not on the property card. So what Mr. Ward's asking is to continue to build on something which I believe is illegal. I don't think, so I think before we go any further with the plans, what I'm asking zoning is should this first-floor apartment that's there, should it even be there? It's clear that it's being used. Clear in my mind that it's illegal. I have the home right next door. We fixed that house. The reason why Mr. Ward's roofline might not meet the height is because the house is not elevated and everybody else's around this hits. This property's had multiple problems with the previous owners digging out the backyard and has created a bridge between our property that continues to grow. And the town had, or the state at one time had a lien on the property and it continues to be dug out and has been dug out by Mr. Ward. So to use this apartment in the back, what he's proposing, in which I have an issue with because I want to protect my property and the sanctity of our neighborhood, is there's not a two-family allot. This property has two points of egress and no law continuing. lot. This property has two points of egress, and no wall continues to that. There's a separation with a screened porch that means nothing. It has two points of egress. You don't even, you can go into the back of the house and never even go into the porch. Our point is, this house was zoned, or originally built for a garage. Whether the building inspector looked at it or not, I don't think structurally, you could build something out that, and it would need some structural reports, and then it would be required by prior to the elevation. But we don't even need to get to that point. But I think the first thing should happen, before we go any further, is determine if this property that I believe was illegally put there by the previous owner continues to be used, that we're going to grant somebody to continue to build on something that's illegal. You know, there's a main house. Mr. Ward wants to raise his roof to thirty-five hundred, or thirty-five feet, add on bedroom, says home. Should be able to do anything he wants, and I would never be here. But I was here a couple of years already ago, and talked to Mr. Ward, because he proposed to build a two-family that he said was going to be a single-family. So it's frustrating that we're here again about this, when we know all these homes, all these homes, every one of them are single families. That's what the neighborhood is zoned for. There's no gray area. The plans are clear. He's proposing to build a better duplex than he has now. That's, that's clear. There's nothing that this wall attaches to. In Massachusetts code, it's clear. There's no continuous wall. There are separate, there's two separate conditioned spaces. I'm in the building business. I'm clear what the code is. Whether the building inspector went out there, I'm surprised that that was a discussion, because in Massachusetts, you can't have two separate spaces and say it's a single family without a continuous wall.
Understood. We have the definitions in the bylaws about accessory apartments that are within or are separate from the primary ground.
Yeah.
Okay.
So our, my concern is that it is detrimental to the neighborhood. It's detrimental to me next door to have a two-family next door to me. It's already heavily used. It's already advertised as a five-bedroom. I can tell you, it is definitely used as a five-bedroom now. There's a lot of traffic there. And adding on to this is exactly what's, looking to build his own place and then rent this place. And that's what our concern is.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? Sir in the back?
Yeah, also a neighbor, Mike Casey, three-twenty-eighth Street. Question, it was said that there was a rebuttal or reply to the, to the paperwork that the neighbors submitted, and we first wanted to just ask how we get a copy of that. We can get a copy of that tonight, or how we can get a copy of it?
Probably email it to them.
Do you want your book?
Yeah, here it is.
So this is a refund?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. And just one thing I wanted to point out, I agree with everything that Tim said, as far as the house, but the one thing I really want to point out here, I'm also here with my wife, Maria Casey, is that there was a VRVO listing, and it was part of the package, and I'm sure everybody saw it. And the property was listed as having five bedrooms, three full baths, sleeps fourteen, and here it says nine, but it actually in the VRVO listing it says in ten beds. So the fact that it's already sleeping fourteen in five bedrooms, now the gentleman talks about removing a bedroom, going from four, keeping it at four. I see it as going from five to six. They'll have four beds, and it'll probably sleep sixteen. And this past summer, and it was referenced that the past owners renting it out, but this past summer it was rented out, or the past couple of summers, all summer long, and there was a large number of people there, upwards of fourteen, I'm sure, and six, five, six, seven cars in the parking lot, in the driveway. So it's a, it's a very busy property, and I think expanding it to six bedrooms and fourteen, I should say sixteen people, is just not, not something that we're agreed to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak, or against? Yes, no, no? All righty.
Make a motion.
Any questions?
Yeah, I think the, we'll discuss it, that we need a motion to continue.
New plan yet.
And so let's understand what we're asked for.
Immediate.
Right. So I think what we're proposing, before we get to it, is that additional, or full floor plans muted?
Can I suggest elevations as well, so you can see what part of the addition is in the house?
Okay.
I have to-
A full set of-
Yes, I'll just make sure you get the full set.
Full set of what is traditionally submitted for a whole house.
Yeah.
Two, the updates are clearly noted.
And I'll correct that. Well, I'll make sure that the chart that we submitted had the correct eight-point-four on the front yard setback. I think the arrow was just in my presentation, so.
Has this gone before con-con, green?
Yes.
So do we have that?
Yeah, it's had a good- Actually, they, they continued, they went over it, they had no issues, but they suggested we leave the hearing open in case the zoning board resulted in any changes that would have then affected the conservation filing. But they are, we're not proposing any disturbance to the ground, so they didn't really have any issues. But they suggested we leave it open in case your decision, you know, creates a change, and then we have to go back and reopen con-con. But we've been to them, and they've, they're comfortable with the proposal, mostly because we're not touching the ground.
And I'll contact the building inspector about his site visit and his observations and-
Okay.
Is there anything else?
That is just what I have.
My own.
I guess my only question is, if you're not adding a bedroom, why do the addition off? Like, you already have a view of the water, right? So what's, what's the goal?
Well, actually, that, that lower bedroom on the back of the garage, there is a big dome. You don't have a view of the water.
So, so what is that? Just step back. What is the goal?
Well, as you can see, what we're, what we're taking out is a pretty small bedroom that's on that first floor, and we're going to put a stairway-
It's not that small. If this is, right? It's not that small.
Okay.
But there's what you're building, yes.
But see, so we're going to eliminate that to put the stairway, and essentially have a second-floor suite, you know, master bed, bedroom and bath, with water views. I mean-
Okay, just wanted to do-
That's all right. Does your motion, Dick?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue, so we can get a full set of plans for the entire house, and have a discussion with the building inspector based on the one-family or single-family.
A second motion?
All righty. Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Continue to its seven-eight seventy?
Yeah, so we're going to continue it to seven-thirty on, it's, I wish we could do, Martha, thanks for correcting.
Very good.
I was hesitating because-
Thursday, Thanksgiving?
No, it's the seventeenth. It's the week before.
It's seventeen, seventeen.
Seventeen. Jack, you're available on seventeenth?
Yeah.
Are you available? It's the week before Thanksgiving. I'm available. So it's the seventeenth is our typical meeting. Thanks, Martha.
Seven-thirty P.M.
Seven-thirty.
I live with that.
All righty, thank you.
Well, thank you for your time and consideration. We'll drill down on those issues.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next one would be, William Baldwin, Sixth Gerard Way, applicant is requesting a special permit finding for a section ninety-seven, dash four D, five C, zero one, increase in footprint, and two, upward extension of Newbury zoning bylaws, and any other permit relief as may be required under the town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project in order to raise the existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling, right-side deck and elevate walkway into constructing new elevated, single-family dwelling with a new front deck with an increase in height on property located at Sixth Gerard Way, Plum Island, Newbury, assessors net U zero one, one zero eight.
Just give it, give me one more minute.
Check.
All right, are you ready?
Yep.
All right.
Good evening. Good evening. Excuse me. For the record, my name is Bill Nolan. I'm the support Nolan Architects. With me is my associate, Adam Ellis, who's worked on the project with me. And I'm here representing the Baldwins, Phil and Brenda Baldwin, who's right behind us. They're the owners at Sixth Gerard Way, Plum Island. Before we start, is this orientation okay?
That's great.
I'm going to be pointing to it, so I don't have to keep walking back. So the house, the existing house on Sixth Gerard Way is an existing one-story, two-bedroom house with a basement. The existing lot is eight thousand, ten square feet, with the front end at sixty-five, sixty-five feet. The existing floor plans and, and pictures of the existing house are in the packet. I don't have enlarged photos of those, but they're in the packet. We're looking to tear down the entire house down to the existing CMU foundation, and put back a new two-story, three-bedroom, single-family house in the same area, and partially built on the existing CMU foundation, and I'll get into that. Why I work for you tonight is to ask for a special permit for an upward extension, an increased footprint for a single-family dwelling for section ninety-seven dash four D, five C, zero one, and two. I'm sure these are very common in here. So I'll start with the site plan. This is the existing site plan. This is Gerard Way here. This is the property here. And the existing house is, is nonconforming with respects to the setbacks in two cases. There's, I highlighted in red here, the twenty-foot front yard setback and ten-yard, ten, ten-foot side and rear setbacks. The existing house is nonconforming, front setback, which we are proposing to maintain. We're not going to increase it. We're just going to maintain the existing front setback. And that is from the deck, the existing deck, fifteen-foot six, and from the stairs, and Newbury's stairs are considered part of the structure. So the existing stair, closest proximity to the front, is twelve-point-three. We're proposing to maintain that. The second nonconformity with regards to the setback is the side setback. There's an existing raised deck and walkway that connects the front deck and to the, to the larger side deck over here and stairs. We're actually proposing to remove that and bring a nonconformity into conformance. The existing deck is four-point-two feet off of the existing property line. Again, we're, this pink area here, we're proposing to remove that, which will now take our side yard setback to plus or minus eighteen feet, and maintain the existing edge of the existing house. This section back in here, it's pretty close to the yellow, but it is actually green, highlighter. This is the proposed new addition, which consists of an eight-foot-nine extension, two-story extension off of the back, which is this area right here, and then a new deck replacing the existing deck that's fully conforming to the setbacks built off of the rear. I know it's late, so I'll try to be brief. So this, right here is our basement floor plan, but also doubles as our lot coverage plan as well. So we've highlighted, you know, the entire footprint that we're considering as our FAR. We are taking the FAR pretty close to the max, so we just wanted to be crystal clear with what we were, you know, what we're calling as our max lot coverage. We did also have a couple conversations with the building department to make sure that we're calculating it correctly. So I'll have it answer any questions at that later on. But the house is kind of broken into a couple bars that I just wanted to tell you. First, this existing deck right here is labeled as a new deck. We're actually proposing to replace an existing deck in the same, same exact area, but it's going to be a new construction deck. And the reason why is because as part of this renovation, we're bringing the first floor up so that it conforms to the flood plain regulations. So the existing floor is about eighteen inches down from where our proposed floor is going to be. So therefore, we needed to raise the deck up. We are proposing to keep stairs here, and it will not encroaching further to the front setback than the present ones do, so we're going to maintain that twelve-three. And the front of the deck is the same, so essentially the same deck, just raised up, and new construction.
Yeah. Any reason why not to just move it back four and a half feet and put it into conformity?
It's, it's a deck that they use quite often. Moving it back four feet would result in a really small deck that would really not be usable to be a balcony at that point. So it really wasn't a consideration.
And the steps going side to the side?
We could talk with the, with the owners. I'm sure that that could possibly be a consideration to bring it back in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a condition. We were just trying to match what was there, figuring that would be the simplest. But, you know, if, if that becomes a condition or something, I'll talk with my client and show that they wouldn't mind that. It'd just be a reconfiguration of the stair.
Is that the main entry to the house, is from the front deck?
Yes. So this first bar right here is the deck that we're replacing. The second bar right here, you can see it right here, that's the extent of the existing CMU foundation, which we're looking to maintain. In maintaining it, because it's in the flood zone, what we have to, we have to make it quote-unquote flood-proof per the building code. What that entails is removing all the equipment and finishes and, and adding flood gates, basically allowing the space to flood, and then most importantly, allowing the floodwater to leave the building after. So it's, it's an uninhabitable basement at that point, intended only for storage. That's this section right here. Then there is an eight-foot-nine section of the, of the addition. These eight-foot-nines, as opposed to like a just clean nine-foot dimension or ten-foot dimension, was based on kind of a careful balance of adding square footage back to the house in deck and in, and in, in structure, while maintaining the lot coverage and the FAR. So those, those are why where the addition numbers are part whole numbers. Okay. And then lastly, is this new deck back here, which is replacing the deck that we're moving over here. Fifteen-foot deck that's fully conforming on the back. Okay. Moving on, since this is the basement, this is the first floor, first main story of the house. This is, has been lifted up and is compliant with the flood regulations. It's a pretty simple, open, concept living area back here. Kitchen's in the back in the corner. You've got a bathroom and a laundry slash utility room, and a staircase leading to the second floor, and an office off of the main living space. We continue to go up the stairs. You can go down the stairs to the, to the basement. That'll be an unfinished stair. And then go upstairs, second floor, where we have three bedrooms, two in the front and a master suite in the back. We have a master bedroom with his and hers closets, and a master bathroom. Did I say bathroom or bedroom? Master- Master bedroom, two closets and a master bathroom. And there's a private balcony off of the master bedroom at this level, built over the living space below. And then the only other thing that we're proposing is a roof deck in this area that you can see on the roof plan. And to get up there, we're proposing a spiral staircase. There's an opening here that gets you up to, we call it doghouse or penthouse, that gets you up to a landing and then onto the roof deck. It's a weather tight enclosure to get up to that roof deck. But there is no habitable space up there, it's just the landing to get to the roof And the, you can see graphically what we're considering for the floor area ratio. Again, we are taking it to the maxals, pretty close to the maxals, so we wanted to be diligent in explaining exactly what we're doing for the FAR. Again, ran it by the building department just to make sure that we were calculating it correctly. And then finally, with regards to height, these are the elevations, and these are in your packet, probably easier to see in your packet. And then some three-dimensional views of what the house is going to look like. This is the front, this area right here is Gerard Way. This is the staircase to the deck that we're replacing here, the front door. This is the second level up here, and the roof deck is on the left side of the house, if you're looking at it from the screen. In terms of the height, maximum roof height, our average grade is elevation 7.3, which gives us a maximum roof height of 42.?
42.3.
42.3. And we are pretty much hitting that with the flat roof. Now, as you know, the roofs are considered from the mean elevation, but we have a flat roof at the top of our doghouse getting onto the roof deck, so that's what we're considering, our max roof height. And we're going to be under the 42.3. I think that's the extent of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. All righty, thank you.
Any questions? Jack, Mario, Michelle?
Thank you for a very dear drawing, a very precise presentation. We appreciate that.
It's kind of my thing.
Yeah, we like that.
So there's a shower enclosure on the side, and just like fenced in or something? And then there's a, it's not a raised path, it's just a path?
Yes, I'm sorry. You're talking about the.
Yeah. It doesn't have a roof on it?
No, it does not have a roof on it.
And there's just a path on the ground that goes around?
Yeah. We have been, by the way, we have been before conservation commission, and we have been approved. That was our first, uh, here, so thank you. Oh, sorry. It's late, it's late for everybody. I have, actually, the Baldwins were, took our advice and went and met all their, you know, neighbors, the direct neighbors, and we actually have three letters of support. The letters for support are from Seven Gerard Way, Five Gerard Way, and Eight, so the budding neighbors. Can I submit those to you?
Yeah, I'll take those and I'll distribute them to the board.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
So the mean height in this case, median height in this case is the 35 feet of the flat roof?
Yeah.
Is that what we're saying?
Yeah. So I don't want to get too technical, and I don't want to confuse the issue here. We're asking for the limit on this, on this plans. We haven't actually gone through and did, do the final technical drawings. We're obviously not going to do that until we get approved by all approvals. We'll go through and we'll cut, you know, detailed sections to the building, and we're likely going to give the, give some tolerance to the contract, because I don't want to go in with the roof being exactly at the top. But for the purposes of this, I just, we're saying that we're up until that, we'll be below that. The technical drawings, we're going to get it as low as we can, just to give the builders as much tolerance as possible. They usually aim for, you know, between four to six inches.
Yeah, I think in terms of looking at this, that's the only, you're saying max roof height, and it calculates out 35, you're saying actual flat roof height, 3410, not to exceed 35. So we'd like to say something definitive about the height.
Yeah.
And usually cringe when people try to hit the 35.
Yeah.
On the nose. If someone was to challenge you and prove out that you were 35 and a half.
We would need to take it down.
You would need to take it down.
Yeah.
So let's not give anybody any opportunity. As I think you just, you said it to us, but we need somehow to get on the elevation, a dimension, if there's a motion, and the documents go with the motion, then it's got to say what it is.
Well, in the interest of not continuing the case to get more, we can be below it. So for example, if we said it was.
You have 3410 here, right? And you did give a little bit about not quite, and it says not to exceed. So I think if we could make some edits to the elevation in anywhere where it says max roof height, that maybe we just cross that off, and the actual flat roof height is the height that's there.
Okay.
Then the document says what it's supposed to say.
Yeah. Could that be said as a condition?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Because it's just again, get, I don't think anybody has any issue with plans or things, and it looks like a nice house, and you have a complete drawing set, it's not like we're trying to get anything or sneak anything by us or do anything that's not, that's suspect. You seem to put a lot of effort and time into it, it's just really just making sure the documents speak to exactly what you're saying.
Yep.
I did measure the plan quickly, and so in terms of the lot coverage, I came out actually slightly under my quick math, so it's good.
We tend to round up, just to make sure that there's, you know, we're not going to get, it's obviously in my best interest to not have a building inspector saying that you're over, and you have to take it down.
Thank you for that presentation.
Okay.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor? You can speak in favor of your own project. Stand up and say your name, and then we'll have it on the record, right? But yeah, okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Jack, any more?
No.
Mario?
No.
Michelle?
No.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I think I will make a motion to grant a request to reconstruct the new two-story family house with conditions on the elevation, revised elevation.
Okay. I think what we're saying is if you could just resubmit the elevation drawing.
Yep.
Remove the max roof height, and just, actual, I didn't take the word, but just proposed flat roof height of 3410, and that's what you're aiming for in your design and See, it says max roof height on the side.
Yeah. Do we, Abby, I'm sorry, do we have, so is it not there? Because this is just saying what the max roof height is, it's clearly underneath here, and then this is our actual roof height.
The white call, right? Yeah.
The phrase, we can remove this as not to exceed 35 feet, just so that's very clear.
Okay.
So that we'll just relabel that as proposed.
Right, somebody else comes along, or, I don't know, some builder is reading this, and then he says max roof height, and he calculates it out to 35 and builds it, and then someone's going to challenge you. Because there always is a little bit of average grading, it's not totally flat.
Sure.
And it looks like you took that into account in quick review, so again.
It was actually done by our engineer. Yeah, so it's as accurate as we can get.
So I think if you just do that, then we're all have the same understanding.
Yep.
What did you say, 3410, is that what you were looking at?
Well, there is a dimension on the drawing that says actual flat roof height is 3410.
Okay.
Not to exceed 35 feet, so if you just leave that on there, and don't, I mean, you're calling out the first floor as an architect, you're calling out average grade first floor, second floor, and then you say max roof height, it seems like you're calling out the max roof height. That's all.
So you want us to remove this?
Yep, that's all, it's all. And then nobody, nobody else that's looking at this drawing quickly thinks that you're, does quick math, says you're at 35, and then thinks that they might want to.
Okay.
Pushing the limits of them.
And that process is just re.
Just this 11 by 17, with that taken off, it's great, send it to Chrissy.
Send it.
Send it to her as soon as you can, she'll send it around to us individually.
You'll get it tomorrow.
If we have that, then.
It's also on this one, do you want to remove that one too?
Yeah, I just want, yeah, I would just remove it. That one does, one says not to exceed 35, so, yeah, I would just remove the 35 on the plan, if there's two, whatever elevations, whatever sections, if you just resubmit those, then we're, we have a record that shows. So as we're having a discussion on the motion, we're not there just yet, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're done with the motion?
Yeah.
We had a quick discussion on exactly what we're looking for. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second, my first motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So it passes on the condition that you resubmit this, it's going to take us, it's going to take Chrissy a few minutes to draft up the decision, and in the process, you would have just brought that in, so when we're reading the decision, we're all moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, fair enough.
We closed the argument, so you have it to me.
Ah.
All righty.
Great, yeah, thank you, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there, we have to sign that right after you make up the, hey, can you, I will be there after Wednesday, so if you can just represent. Okay. Okay.
At the next meeting.
I hope that one's getting very relevant.
Yeah, I'm here for the 17, okay? I thought this was going to happen soon.
Happy to be in that place.
Thank you. Bye. Good to see you guys.
Thanks for all your help.
Think every town needs a Christmas.
Thank you. It makes it all worth it, Marv.
We have to draft, and then accept the decision.
Until Monday.
Yes.
I'm just saying, get the drawing in so that we review it when we get the decision, and then, I like to do everything at once and not have stuff longer, that's all. And also, if we get it, if you can give us stuff at the time of, then if we have issues for some odd reason, then it gets continued again.
But if you've directed, pressed to direct the decision in favor, but it still needs to be reviewed by, at the meeting and approved.
All right. Your other business, are we closed? Close the meeting?
We're done with public hearings.
Okay. Was there something else?
There's one more item on the agenda.
Yes. I've lost the agenda.
So I think, Mario, as you're moving to the more informative and documentative decisions, the motion should be that a decision, I make a motion to draft a decision.
Okay.
And then we're in the process of drafting a decision for review and approval. In the past, we used to make a decision, then approve the decision.
To draft, yeah.
And then we used to just double check the language and sign it and go from there, as we have a very nice and complete record of what we're doing, and that we all need to actually review it.
Right.
Or get it.
Yeah.
It's the last thing on the agenda?
Yeah, sure.
Is it pizza party or what?
Other business. Discussion of appointment of ZBA third voting member, board's discussion to make recommendations to select board for third voting member due to resignation of a member in the line maker.
Right, so Elaine contact me, and she said she's got a lot going on with family over the next couple months or something, and then she would basically resign from the board. And so we have two alternates, which is great, and so one of you can become the next member, and the other one hopefully will stay as an associate member. And I guess, I don't know if we're really into the process, because we've never really had anybody, and we've always been in need, we just got the third person and kept going. And so there's discussion, or, you know, do you want to be a member, or do you want to be a member? If you both want to be a member, then it, and the select board has to have final review and say, kind of thing. So it's not like we're deciding right now, or we're not taking a vote amongst us to do it, we're finding your interest and your interest in which to do it.
I don't know, what do you think, Michelle? Rock, paper, scissors? Loser gets the pick?
You were your first.
Did you say you can give both? You can make that for the select board.
So as we, Martha and I, town council, Larry, planning board, met and went over a first pass of some proposed provisions to the bylaws. And there'll be another meeting, and there'll probably be another meeting. And when those are all pulled together as this is what we're proposing, then, and I did talk to, I did mention to town council, I haven't mentioned it to town administrator yet, and I would talk to one or two people on the select board and say, this is a thought and proposing this, and this is the reason why. And so I think we will be moving towards trying to expand to five members, but it's not going to happen right this second, and I'm not just going to offer it up as a one-off, out of the blue kind of thing. It's going to ride along with the zoning revisions, and we'll talk through it as that happens. So hopefully it will be five, and if we have five, then there can be, two people can actually talk and discuss and better understand the bylaws. And if there's a contact with town council, then two people can ask the same question, and we could be, I think hopefully a little more vision and understanding and aligned. If, if we can't get five people to show up every night, then we've set ourselves up for detriment for not being able to get through it. And for the, it's 2002, it'll be 2013, I don't know exactly when I started, but I think it was late 2013?
I think.
Was it 14, 13?
It might have been 12 even.
All right, so I've been here almost 10 years. And in almost 10 years, with Michelle and Jack, is the first time we've actually had two, I was the associate for the longest time. And then, and then it was just three of us for the longest time, and now this is the first time we've had five since we were here. So that's been.
People can take vacations then.
And not show up because you've got something to happen, and we've just got more people to add, add.
Comments.
Comments and discussions and provide point of view. And that is actually written in the bylaws that it's three to five people, right? Okay, did they say that right?
I think so.
Yeah, I think it's written in there. So it's not like we're asking for anything that's different, it's just decided, okay, we're going to go with three people. And it's been, it's been a little hard pressed to actually fill out the whole board, and we did advertise for a while and get much response. So it's in the works, it's not going to happen too soon. So, yeah, I don't want you guys to fight it out, and I do want you both showing up, and I would like you both to be continuously, whether you're a member or an associate member, figure out how you'd like to do that.
Yeah, if Jack is interested, he has seniority on the board, so he should take it. I'm still happy to be an associate member.
Okay.
That's very gracious of you, Michelle. Well, seriously, and I think I would be interested.
Okay, so we can present that to the select board, and we'll draft up a recommendation, we'll put it in, we'll put all your names, or just describe the whole board, that Elaine resigned, we have two associate members, and as per the discussion of the board, Jack would like to be the member.
Motion to close the meeting?
Speaker? Wait a minute, Larry, you have anything else?
No, has Elaine actually submitted her resignation to anyone?
She is writing, well, an email to myself, Eric, and I believe you.
I think it's either got to go to the appointing authority, which is the select board, or the town clerk.
Oh, I forwarded the email to Tracy and Julie.
And Julie notified me of Elaine's resignation.
The town clerk?
Oh, if I may, of the resignation. Okay. Yeah, it was the town clerk, yes.
Well, I'm also going to, I'm going to write a letter, I can draft a letter, I can just write it myself, and I can send it into the select board and just say, here's the situation. We have via email Elaine Baker's resignation, and this is how we'd like to proceed upon recommendation of the chair, is how we'd like to proceed and send it to the select board and let them deal with it. I'm sure if there's any question, town council will straighten it out.
Yep.
It's had, this hasn't happened too often. I think the last time someone left, they just, they just didn't show up. They weren't showing up, so they didn't show up anymore. Okay, now, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.